Okay, Mayor, your line.
Okay. Call the order, the Town North Branford Town Council Meeting Tuesday, April 19th, 2022 at 7:24 PM. We'll pledge allegiance to the flag.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thanks everyone for making it out here tonight, and for those that are watching on Totucket TV, thank you for tuning in. We have an exciting agenda for you today. Okay, so Michelle, if you could start with roll call, please.
Mayor McClellan.
Present.
Deputy Mayor Zampano.
Here.
Counselor Angeloni.
Here.
Counselor Abelson.
Here.
Counselor Diamond, here. Counselor Downs.
Here.
Counselor Goode. Counselor Meese.
Here.
Counselor Pacheco.
Okay, thank you. Okay, I'll accept second part of the meeting, those minutes of the meeting, previous meetings be accepted. I'll accept a motion for the March 29th, 2022 budget workshop.
So moved, second.
Motion by Counselor Angeloni, seconded by Counselor Diamond. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed, stand, thank you. B, April 5th, 2022, WPCA and Town Council Meeting, 7:00 PM.
So moved, second.
Again, motion by Counselor Angeloni, seconded by Counselor Diamond. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Aye. Opposed, stand, thank you. Item C, April 5th, 2022, Budget Hearing, 8:00 PM.
So moved, second.
Motion by Counselor Angeloni, seconded by Counselor Downs. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed, abstained, okay. And E, April 11th, 2022, Budget Deliberations.
How about D?
Oh, we forgot D. There's a lot of them here. Yeah, D, excuse me. April 7th, 2022, Budget Workshop.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Motion by Counselor Angeloni, seconded by Deputy Mayor. All in favor? Aye. And E, April 11th.
No, 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 I have to, I'm abstaining.
Oh, you're, the one that I didn't ask for. Abstained, thank you very much. April 7th is abstained by Counselor Diamond. Thank you. Counselor Diamond. And item E, April 11th, 2022, Budget Deliberations.
So moved.
Okay. Wait a second. Okay, thank you. I have a motion by Counselor Angeloni, seconded by Counselor Diamond. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed, stand. Okay, got through that.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to move an item up on the agenda. I would like to move item 8F, Budget Deliberations, to just before item 3.
Okay, a motion to move item 8F, Budget Deliberations, to just before item 3. Motion by Counselor Angeloni, seconded by Deputy Mayor Zampano. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed, stand, okay. All right, so we're going to move into Budget Deliberations for FY 2223. Subset I, General Government Services.
Okay, so everyone should have in front of you two handouts. We're just going to go down there. These are budget notes for things that we are going to discuss tonight.
Yes.
So we'll start off with the first item is the General Fund Surplus applied. It's account number 101-3840-591. I'd like to make a motion to increase that amount to $800,000. So it's an increase of $200,000, which would keep it at the current level from the current year's budget.
Second. Okay, motion by Counselor Angeloni, seconded by Counselor Downs. Any discussion?
Yeah. If I'm reading this here, it says delete 200,000?
Well, it goes in the delete because it actually increases, decreases the mill rate. So it's just for when I added up the columns, all of the items.
All right, so it's getting deleted from where, from the general fund?
No, it's a delete as far as the total dollar amount, the plus of the credits and the debits on the budget. So it would go under the delete column because it's going to increase the amount of money that, which will have a...
So it's a debit here and then a credit somewhere else?
Yeah, so it's, we're just going to keep it at the same level that we currently have.
Okay.
Just not affecting the mill rate? Is this in relation to the state also, for the tax rebate?
No, has nothing to do with the tax rebate.
I thought you wanted to keep it at the same level for that.
Your summary page might help you. If you go to the summary page, Counselor Angeloni is referring to the fund balance. You'll see from the 2122 budget, we had 800,000 in the left-hand column. As you move across, the Town Manager's proposal was 600,000, and what Counselor Angeloni is asking is to increase that back to the original 800,000 and move 200,000 back.
Yeah, this has nothing to do with the car taxes.
We discussed it. We'll get there.
Yeah, we'll get there in a minute.
Just wanted to make sure.
Unfortunately, that's still in the works.
Sorry.
That's good. Part of this is why we have discussion portion. Okay, any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Aye. Abstained, opposed?
Okay, the next item is under Town Manager. We had discussed this during our budget workshops and even prior to budget about having an HR person, and we talked about having, making it a possible position. And Mike actually came back to us with, he would like to hire an HR consultant for the year through an outside company that would be dedicated to North Branford. So I'd like to make a motion to increase account number 101-4125-3200000 by $50,000.
Second. Okay.
And how much is in the fund currently?
There's not, this is an add. So this is adding, instead of adding a full position for an Assistant Town Manager at this time period, we're going to, we want to make sure the HR needs are met, which we talked about in February.
Yes, I get that.
This would be like automated HR. My company does it as well. Offsets the HR component, and they do it professionally.
Okay.
All right, so we had a motion by Counselor Angeloni and seconded by Counselor Diamond? Oh, I'm sorry, seconded by Counselor, thank you.
Row just clarify, is that 30, there's 20 in there already. You're going 30 more or 50 more?
That's what I was asking, how much is in there? What's going in there?
Yeah, so actually, it would be, it would just be 30 more because there's already 20 in there.
Okay, good.
The most agreed to increase it 30,000.
So I'll amend the motion to increase that.
One second there.
Okay. I amended a motion. Michelle, do you have that?
Increase by 30,000 to total 50,000.
Okay, perfect. Okay, that's a motion by Counselor Angeloni, seconded by Counselor...
First we have to accept the amended motion.
Counselor, okay, Counselor Abelson, any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Aye. Opposed, stand. Okay, thank you.
Okay, the next department is Library, and during our budget workshops, we had talked about adding an Assistant Library Director, a full-time position. There is a part-time person retiring later this year. So instead of replacing the part-time person, we talked about starting or adding this new position. This motion is going to start the position as of January 1st of 2023. So it's a half-year position for the next fiscal year, and then it'll just roll over into a full-time following year on there. We did talk to the Library Director about this. She is on board with the person starting in January, and she will use some of the savings from the person that's retiring to fill in the hours needed for October, November, and December until the person comes on board. So we have to do each line item for each item for this rather than just one bulk, so there'll be multiple motions to add this position. So the first one is for account number 101-4416101, adding the salary for the Assistant Library Director for six months for $31,415.
Second.
Okay, motion by Counselor Angeloni, seconded by Counselor Diamond. Any discussion?
Yeah, point of information. So that $31,415 starts in January and expires in June?
Correct.
Rolls into the next year as a full-time position, so...
So when we do budget next year, then...
We budget a full position.
Am I to assume that the full-time position will be 62,000 and change? Okay.
Or whatever the salary is at that time.
Yeah.
And then that's going to affect all your other motions all the way down, tangs in the 5K and all the other stuff, right?
Well, these numbers are based on the 31,000.
Yeah. Okay, so we're only budgeting for the half-year on our fiscal, and the next fiscal will do the full year for this position. But it will be figured into the actual budget, so for...
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, so we had a motion by Counselor, we have, Counselor Diamond is the second. Any other discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed, abstained? All right, it's great, looking forward to having an Assistant Library Director.
All right, the next motion, I'd like to make a motion to increase the pension account, account number 101-4416120, like $2,825.
Second.
Motion by Counselor Angeloni, seconded by Counselor Diamond. Any discussion?
This was in relation to...
Shame, they have to break down everything on that one. For some reason, we have to motion it versus a package. Can we, Counselor, can we, can we package this into one motion?
Negative.
No.
They're all separate.
Gotcha.
Responsibility.
Gotcha.
So, all right, I'm going to just run through it.
Yep. So, fun, fun. All right, so any other, any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Aye. Opposed, abstained? Okay, thank you. Proceed.
The next item is line item 101-4416120. I'd like to make a motion to increase the FICA Medicare in relationship to this new position by $2,400.
Second.
Okay. Motion by Counselor Angeloni, seconded by Counselor Diamond. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Aye. Opposed, abstained? Okay, carry on.
I'd like to make a motion to increase workers' comp, account number 101-4734-7330821 by $11.
Second.
All right, any discussion on the $11? Seeing none, all in favor? Aye. Opposed, abstained? Wonderful, carry on.
The next, I'd like to make a motion to increase account number 101-4734-7210820 by $13,800.
Second.
Okay. Motion by Counselor Angeloni, seconded by Counselor Diamond. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Aye. Opposed, abstained? Thank you, carry on.
I'd like to make a motion to increase account number 101-4734-7410820, term life insurance by $100.
Second.
Okay. Again, motion by Counselor Angeloni, seconded by Counselor Diamond. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Aye. Opposed, abstained? Okay, carry on.
I'd like to make a motion to increase line item 101-4416120, deferred compensation by $750.
Second.
Okay. Motion by Counselor Angeloni, seconded by Counselor Diamond. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Aye. Opposed, abstained? Thank you, carry on.
I'd like to make a motion to increase line item 101-4734-7340832, long-term disability by $230.
Second.
Oh, something new. All right. Motion by Counselor Angeloni, seconded by Deputy Mayor Zampano. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed, abstained? All right, that finishes off the Library Director, Assistant Director. I'm excited to get that.
The next two motions are related to when Lauren Davis did her presentation to us, the part-time wages that are paid to the part-time librarians and assistants there are a little out of whack, and so this is just to correct them to the benchmarking by the Connecticut Library Association. So I'd like to make a motion to increase line item 101-4416102 by $1,523.
Second.
Okay. Motion by Counselor Angeloni, seconded by Counselor Diamond. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Aye. Opposed, abstained? All right, carry on.
I'd like to make a motion to increase line item 101-4416120, the Social Security Alternative by $20, and this is related to the part-time wage.
Second.
All right, motion by Counselor Angeloni, seconded by Counselor Diamond. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed, abstained? Thank you, carry on.
The next two line items are related to the retirement that is happening at the end of September. So this is the net effect of the savings, and then she has to use some of those savings to increase, offset the hours for October, November, and December. So I'd like to make a motion to decrease account number 101-4416102 by $6,605.
Second.
Okay. Motion by Counselor Angeloni, seconded by Counselor Abelson. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed, abstained?
All right, I'd like to make a motion to increase account number 101-4416120, the Social Security Alternative by $100.
Second.
Okay. Motion by Counselor Angeloni, seconded by Counselor Diamond. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Aye. Opposed, abstained? All right, thank you. Let's carry on to the community sector.
The next department is the Community Center. There's two small minor corrections. One is in the Professional Development Account. This is for the National Conference with the Park and Rec Department reopening, and they did not go last year to the conference. This was requested by the department and approved by the Commission and then cut by the Town Manager, so I would like to make a motion to put it back into their budget. So I'd like to make a motion to increase line item 101-4401319 by $2,500.
Okay. Second. Got a motion by Counselor Angeloni, seconded by Deputy Mayor Zampano. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Aye. Opposed, abstained? Okeydoke, thank you.
And the next item, I'd like to make a motion, this is for the park monitor that we have. They use their own vehicle to go from park to park when they're doing monitoring, so they, this is mileage reimbursement for the person. Again, this was requested by the department, approved by the Commission, and then removed by the Town Manager, but because there's not a town vehicle that they can use and they use their own, it's just mileage reimbursement for the year. So I'd like to make a motion to increase account 101-4401307 by $1,872.
Okay. Motion by Counselor Angeloni, seconded by Counselor Abelson. Any discussion?
So there is no cars available right now?
No, Park and, yeah, Park and Rec doesn't have any vehicles associated with any...
So are, just a question, are the cars here at the Town Hall, are they all assigned to someone?
No, they're not.
Not all of them, no. And we try to keep a rotating fleet, first come, first served, sign out, take, bring back kind of thing. But, you know, they're not all in great shape, and we manage the best we can with what fleet we have.
And the park monitor also does not work necessarily during Town Hall hours, 8:30 to 4:30, because they could be working on weekends, they could be working later in the afternoon also, so even if there was a car here, they wouldn't be able to sign in and out.
Maybe more give them a card, make them...
No, I wasn't, I wasn't even thinking that. I was just thinking if there was cars here and nobody was using them, then why wouldn't they come, you know? But I didn't realize they had to sign it in and out, so, okay.
I have one question. When they're driving their personal vehicle going back and forth, they get into an accident, is the town on the hook or are you on personal insurance responsible for that, driving back and forth, or is it the answer to that?
It would, I hate to give you a lawyer answer, but it would depend on the specific facts and circumstances of the employee's use of his personal vehicle with regard to if he's or she is transacting town business. In the first instance, their insurance carrier would step up, but in the second, as a town employee, 7-465 of the Connecticut General Statute says we have an obligation to defend and indemnify. So frequently, you can have more than one layer of coverage in a situation such as that. So that's a longer answer, but we'd have to see the, exactly what we're dealing with. But if they're town employees on their way, assigned to do a job by the town, leaving from here to go somewhere else, it is possible that we're going to have to, you know, indemnify and defend and step up and perhaps even be on the hook on the comp side.
Thank you, Counselor.
You're welcome.
Okay, so the next item is contingency.
We have to fill in that, right?
Oh.
So I have a motion and I have a second, correct? Counselor Abelson. Are we at discussion? Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Aye. Opposed, abstained? Carry on.
Okay, so next item is contingency. In talking to Anthony as to what is, how they arrived at the contingency number in the budget, it's $345,000. So there's a base amount that they start with, which is $175,000 for contingency, and then they added in money for, we have one contract that's up for negotiations, which is public works. So they put money into contingency for public works contract, and then there's also money in there for the administrators. And as you all know, we were doing, we did the salary study, and we got the results of the salary study. So there's two parts to the administrator. One is to do salary adjustments on employees, which the Town Manager is working on. We discussed this, and there's a pool of money that we gave him for that. And then there's also their merit increases, which will be for July 1st. So there's two parts of that. And the amount of money that they put into contingency is larger than the amount that we discussed with the Town Manager for total. So that, so I would like to make a motion to decrease account 101-4703760, contingency by $35,000.
Second.
Okay, motion by Counselor Angeloni, seconded by Counselor Downs. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Aye. Opposed, abstained? All right, carry on.
Okay, so we're done with general government as far as motions that I had, I don't know if anyone else has any, but that's what I...
Okay, that should be that. We're going to carry on to the second item, capital improvement plan.
Okay, so that is page two. That was on your desk. So anything that's highlighted are the ones that we're going to be discussing, all of the other ones we did on 4/11. So the first item is, there was a, under budget funds, in the original budget presentation, there was $35,000 of budget funds for police cars, and that was for the outfitting of two of the police cars, but that is going to be taken care of out of another fund. So we're going to reallocate those budget funds. And so my first motion is to allocate 15,000 of the budget funds to the Town Hall interior painting, and this actually is going to be added to the townwide maintenance, building maintenance, so that Franny, Franny has control of that, but he didn't want to use, because it's a large, it's a larger amount of money, he didn't want to use up the 50,000 all towards painting. And this first round of painting is to paint the interior, the four hallways.
Four hallways, okay.
So it's none of the offices, this is originally, this is for the hallways right now to paint. And Franny does have a quote already on it, it's just shy of $15,000, but this will...
If the paint of hallways is just okay? Might have to get the painting. I'm in the wrong business. Sorry.
So this 15,000 is from budget funds. It's just reallocating that 35,000, or part of the 35,000.
Okay, so we have a motion for Counselor Angeloni, seconded by Deputy Mayor Zampano. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Aye. Opposed, abstained? Okay, thank you.
Okay, the second part of that motion is to make a motion to decrease the budget funds in the CIP for the police cars by $20,000. That's the, so if you take the 20 and the 15, that's the 35,000 that was in budget funds. So the 20,000 is going to be a decrease.
Okay.
Because it's budget funds.
Motion by Counselor Angeloni, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Downs. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Aye. Opposed, abstained? Okay, carry on, thank you.
Okay, so then the next one is a police, for the Police Department, a maintenance account. Actually, Deputy Mayor Zampano brought this up in a discussion that we had, seeing that they're still in their building for another year in the current building that they're in, and there could be things that come up in this year that they would need, emergency situations that they would need for maintenance items, and they can also use this money to outfit the police cars, the new police cars, because that's not covered under the grant. So whatever it costs to do that, if they don't have enough money in their budget, that this would take care of that. So I am making a motion to allocate $50,000 to the Police Department Maintenance Account, and this is from the undesignated fund balance.
Second.
Maintenance reserve.
Maintenance reserve fund?
Yeah.
Maintenance account is in the regular department.
Okay, maintenance reserve.
All right, so amend the motion to indicate maintenance reserve. I have a motion by Counselor Angeloni, I got it seconded by Counselor Zampano.
I was just going to say that I think that's a good idea, because they're already running into a lot of problems in that building, and I'm sure they're going to have more before the year's over.
Yeah, I, Counselor, that's a...
This is strictly for the maintenance of the building?
Well, it...
Not equipment?
Well, it could be used for the outfitting of the setup of a new police car.
If they need it.
Right.
Yeah, in maintenance of the building.
Maintenance of the building?
The current building.
Okay.
While they're still in there?
While they're still in there. So before we go...
Well, they're having to do some outfitting now because they're having a set of females up.
I know, so I don't know if this is an appropriate time to break.
So, I'm, I, I don't know if this is an appropriate time to break this up. So he mentioned something, and listen, I'm in IT, and I know about the server, I agree with it, I have not, no problems with it. But all of a sudden, it comes back into the budget. We approved it for him to purchase it back in December, all right?
No, that was, that was to apply for the grant. And it, as part of the grant application, we had to say that we would fund the rest of the cost of the server.
We didn't fund it, it came out of the new building. We were taking, because it was, it was discussed.
It'll be utilized for the building.
Right. No, the money was to come out of the new building. So, I'm pretty good, I'm reading about this, because this is something that, this is right off my head. I have no problems funding it, I just wanna make sure that it just doesn't, it's not.
These were apples and oranges, so that, I understand where you're coming from. That was utilizing, utilizing a new server that will be utilized again.
In the buil, in the building, and he was, the discussion was, can we use the money from the new building fund?
To use something.
And purchase the server. And we all agreed, yes, you could. Now, all of a sudden, it's coming, it's back.
No, this is different.
And he didn't, but, and again, he didn't purchase it, I'm okay with it, it's fine. But now it's in his budget, because we've already told him that he can go purchase it from the new building.
This is for, so for instance, we have another female officer that's joining our force, which is wonderful.
This has nothing to do with that.
Well, that's what this is for, though.
But I wanna make sure that that's not.
Not used for the server. Correct.
I'm sorry, I know it's, listen, it's.
Yeah, no, no.
It's miniscule to the, kind of what we're talking about. It just doesn't smell.
Yeah, well, this is different.
Well, the, the server is being purchased out of this year's money.
From, from the new building.
No, they, they, they came back, the police department came back and gave us a list of items that they want to cover out of the excess.
The new building.
No, no, no. This just happened within the last two weeks, ten days. They came back with a list of items for us as to what they were gonna use, the overage in the police department budget for this year, and the server was on there in addition to some other things. So then we don't have to use the money out of the new building to purchase the server, because it will already be bought out of this year's funds.
Transfer later on to the agenda to cover that, as you mentioned.
Okay.
Yeah, that will come up. It's a valid point to think about, but this is completely different.
Listen, I'm pretty, my memory's pretty good, the fact that, you know, we had a long discussion about where the money was gonna come from, and could he do it? If he, because he needs it.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, Chief Halloran has responded, it's up in the group text there. He's also available if you want to recognize him.
All right. The server's coming out of this, the, Chief Halloran indicated that the server's coming out of this year's fiscal year, so he's gonna utilize monies from this year fiscal year.
Okay, then I'm all good with it.
His current budget because of extra funds from salaries and pension. We did talk about it about two and a half weeks ago. So, yes.
We did talk about it, because he brought it up.
Good memory, totally different thing, but yes, I see where you're coming from. It's being used from overage of dollars from this year.
Then I'm all good with it.
We're gonna go into that in a little bit. This is strictly for.
I'm just saying, I just wanna be sure that we're giving him more, we're giving him a, a fund.
Yep.
Which is a great idea.
We're gonna come back to it, we're gonna stick onto this here.
That's my discussion.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so I have, I have a motion by Councilor Angeloni, do I have a second? I have freshed my memory here.
Yes.
All right, of course, second by Deputy Mayor Zampano. Any other discussion?
No.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Obstained? All right, let's carry on.
Okay, so under public works, we're gonna go to the second item, the new storage maintenance building, because the partial road reconstruction, we're gonna come back to that, because that is just moving around some funds. So I'm gonna go to the new storage maintenance building. This has been in Franny's capital for a few years. As we heard during our budget workshops, he needs more storage space for his maintenance and for, just for general storage things. The Board of Ed would also utilize this for all of their maintenance things. So John Florio and Ken Ash, the two maintenance guys, would have a place to work and store things. And then also Ron Felicia had brought up, because Park and Rec was looking to have a possible storage, you know, buying one of those cloder buildings for storage and then opening it, is, could we add that on to Franny's building if we were gonna build something? So the, Franny has gotten updated numbers plus, so the building size that Franny is proposing is fifty by one hundred, so it's five thousand square feet, which is larger than what he had originally planned, but this incorporates the Park Rec idea then also. And so, and with the new numbers, so the cost of that building is eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And it would, according to Franny, he does have room behind the current public works building in that big parking lot behind it, so that's where it would go. So I'd like to make a motion to use undesigned fund balance for eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the new storage maintenance building.
Second. Okay, motion by Councilor Angeloni, second by Councilor Abelson. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Obstained? All right, thank you.
All right, the next item is under culture and recreation, and this is the STW tennis court, which is, it's a multi-use court, actually. So a few years ago, we did just do a repair to that court, resurfaced it, and put up new fencing. We just put lights on that court from the current year's budget. And over the winter, there was, you know, some hairline cracks. They thought that that's all that it was going to be, and they have now become more than hairline cracks. And the court, that's basically our pickleball area. I mean, they do use memorial courts some, but they really use Stanley T and now with the lights. So the company that did memorial, the memorial courts and the Northford Park courts, tennis courts, actually was here last week. And he is the person that Franny would prefer to do this court, and it's post-tension, which it has a twenty-five-year guarantee. He did, he shot the court and everything to make sure, to see once if they can do the post-tension over the top of the existing court without having to rip it out. And he can do that. And he can save the fence around the tennis courts, so he would take, take it out while he did everything, and then he can put it back on there. So this, this is gonna require a two-motion in order to, to do this, because Anthony told us at the last meeting, we have some capital money that's more than five year, five years old on capital projects that we have to close out. So we're gonna use that money to fund it, and then we have to take some money from the undesigned fund balance. So my first motion is to appropriate ninety-seven thousand from the undesigned fund balance for the post-tension for the STW court.
Second. Okay, motion by Councilor Angeloni, second by Councilor Downs. My quick discussion would be, do we know when this would take place and how long the court would be out of commission?
So he is going to repair the court so that we can use them during the season.
See, good.
Now, he, he looked at the cracks and he can repair them for a couple thousand dollars, which Park and Rec is gonna take out of their budget.
Good.
To repair them. He said that he can't guarantee them for another winter.
Of course.
But if we, once this is approved and we can get on his list, he is proposing to do it this fall.
Good. So after we use the courts for summer programs?
And everything else.
Great, that's good.
He would, he would do it this fall. There's a thirty-day curing time, and then the paint and everything else. So the, the plan is, depending on weather and everything else, to get it done this fall, so that they're all set to go for next year. And that this court, they, the way they're going to set it up is that they are going to stripe it for, they can get ten pickleball courts on there. We have someone in town who is very involved in pickleball and runs tournaments. And so that's a revenue generator also for Park and Rec then. And then part of the court is also striped for street hockey, for hockey. And they have nets, and he's going to put it so that at some point in time, if pickleball no longer is so, you know, in vogue and everything else, and we wanna go back to tennis courts, they're gonna put the post in, the dividers to divide off the, because it's gonna be five pickleball courts and then five in the back, in front and back, he's gonna put the post in so that it's the line for the tennis courts, so that it's easy to do it. And they can also take those posts out and just cap them off if there's some other use. So he's really designing it so that we can.
Turned multi-purpose.
So that twenty-five years, we will get a lot of use out of that.
So, that's great. Thank you.
I mean, I remember when they, how long ago was that that they redid that?
I'm not exactly sure.
Less than five years?
Yes.
Probably.
Yeah.
And there's no warranty on that from the previous company?
Well, it's, it was just a fix. It was, we knew that, we knew that we weren't gonna get, it's, it's beyond the, the warranty that they gave, because it was just going over existing.
Likely, the way that we did it.
Yeah.
We saved by now not having to do a rip out, we're able to put this over that court, so it was actually a good move.
This came up before this problem was on that court.
Correct.
If I remember correctly.
Yeah.
Yes.
It did.
Yes, yes.
Frost has done a lot of damage to it.
But it, that, that court, even now, I mean, the lights have just been on only maybe a month at the most up there. That court is used.
Constantly.
That multi-use court is used a lot.
Drive by every day.
Yeah, so.
It's a good piece of land to develop for recreation, that area. Okay, thank you. All right, so we have a motion by Councilor Angeloni, a second by Councilor Downs. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Obstained? All right, carry on.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion to reallocate the one hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars from the over-five-year CIP accounts to close them out and to allocate it to the STW court.
Second. Okay, motion by Councilor Angeloni, second by Councilor Abelson. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Obstained? All right, thank you, carry on.
Okay, and the last item requiring funds is, I'd like to make a motion to allocate ninety thousand dollars from the undesigned fund balance for JHS paving. Second. Okay, so in a discussion that I had with Scott yesterday in regards to their budget, and in talking about the paving, I know originally they were looking to do both Jerome Harrison and Totucket Valley. And in our discussion, we chose Jerome Harrison, because that was the worst out of the two. And then also, with the two previous CIPs that we did for TBS, the unit ventilators and the lighting upgrade, both of those projects are eligible for the forty percent rebate from Wallingford Electric. So since we funded them through our CIP, that rebate money will come back to us on the town side. And once we get that, we can then reallocate it so that we can do the TBS paving. And Scott thought that was a great idea, and he was okay. So as soon as we, you know, whether we get it this year, this fiscal year, or next fiscal year, whenever we get it, then we can reallocate that money to do the paving. And he was, he was good with that and to do the Jerome.
Yeah, that's the one that needs a warranty, most of the year. Okay, all right, that's great, thank you. We have a motion, Councilor Angeloni, second by Councilor Diamond. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Obstained? All right.
I have one question.
Yes, sir.
Refresh my memory on the partial road reconstruction project.
Yeah, we're getting that right now. We, we, because it's not, it's not actually bond funds, or it's not any funding, it's just reallocating some grant money.
Okay, just okay.
So, on the partial road reconstruction, so there's, in the original budget, we had, there was a hundred and eight thousand dollars out of the municipal project grant to go towards police cars. But the way the grant works is we can only purchase the cars itself, not the outfitting of the cars. So I talked to Deputy Chief Lovelace, and the price of two vehicles, two cars, is seventy thousand dollars, thirty-five thousand each, just for the car alone. So we're gonna take thirty-eight thousand, which would be the remaining out of that one hundred and eight, and reallocate it to partial road reconstruction, which is allowed under the municipal grant funding. I talked to Anthony Esposito and said, what kind of things can happen? This is one of the things, I did talk to Victor Benny, the engineer also, and asked him, out of all of the different road accounts, which one would he prefer that it go to? And he said to go to the partial road reconstruction. So I make a motion to reallocate thirty-eight thousand dollars from the municipal project grant to partial road reconstruction.
Second. All right, motion by Councilor Angeloni, seconded by Councilor Abelson. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Obstained? Okay, thank you.
Okay, and then Anthony also told us about sixty thousand dollars in low sub money, which is also grant money from previous years that needs to be reallocated. This, again, was one of those things that I talked to Victor Benny, the town engineer. So we're also going, I'm gonna make a motion to reallocate the sixty thousand dollars in low sub funds to the partial road reconstruction.
All right, motion by Councilor Angeloni, do I have a second?
No, second.
Second by Councilor Downs. All in favor? I'm sorry, discussion?
Just, that's current year money, that's not older ones.
Oh, it's current year, okay. So it's just low sub money.
Thank you. All right, any other discussion?
So the total, the total is for that?
We're adding ninety-eight thousand to the hundred and sixty-two thousand that's already in the budget.
Correct, from the low sub.
Okay.
Reallocated.
Okay.
Okay. All right, any other discussion? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Obstained? All right, thank you.
Okay, so that gives a between, on capital, between what we did on April eleventh and what we just did tonight, we have a total of two million, two hundred and ninety-seven thousand, six hundred and forty dollars that we used the undesigned fund balance to fund these capital projects.
Okay. Good, good. All right, we're good with capital improvement, we're gonna move on to debt services.
I think there's nothing on debt services.
I think there is either. Anthony, nothing, correct?
Thank you.
Okay, can move on from that to education.
Okay, so on education, I did talk to, I called Scott yesterday and had a discussion with him as to how we could fund the Board of Education's request at a level that would not be detrimental to our mill rate and increase it greatly. And we became very creative in our thinking of different funding sources to use to do this. And I just wanna, I know Scott's on the phone, I just wanna thank Scott. It was a great discussion. We both had ideas, and I think we came up with some great ways of being able to fund the Board of Education. And he was very reciprocal to my ideas, I was very reciprocal to his ideas, and I think we came together with a good package. And he was happy with the results of, of what it is. And it's a couple different funding sources, so there's a couple different motions that is going to accomplish what we had talked about in our discussion. So the first motion I would like to make is to increase the Board of Education's budget by current budget by three hundred thousand dollars to make their total budget for next year out of budget funds, thirty-two million, seven hundred and thirty-five thousand, seven hundred and fourteen dollars. Second.
All right. Any, a motion by Councilor Angeloni, seconded by Deputy Mayor Zampano. Any discussion? Any discussion?
I'd also like to say thank you to Superintendent Schoolmaker and the Board of Ed. It's a collaborative effort, and I've really appreciated, you know, getting in on caucus meetings and having conversations and work amongst both parties. It's important that we, you know, we fund our education in this town, and we continue to strive towards the best school system out there, so thank you for collaboratively working together and getting this done. So, that said, any other discussion? Seeing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Shall pass, thank you.
Okay, so one of the other funding sources that we talked about was the 2021-22, so it's the current year's special ed access cost grant. Currently, so that gets paid in two different installments during the year. Right now, we know that one of them is approximately $150,000, we don't know how much the second one will be. Scott, do you know when that usually comes? Is it usually in May?
Yes, that's correct, we should know in May.
Okay, so I would like to make a motion to allocate the 2021-22 special ed access cost grant to the Board of Education.
Second.
All right. Motion made by Council Angeloni, seconded by Deputy Mayor Zampano. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? All right, this will pass, thank you.
Okay, and one other thing that we talked about yesterday also was, and this was actually, Scott brought this up, and we talked about it, and it is about funding the 2% fund account. So currently, the Board of Education has approximately $900,000 between the 1% fund from several years ago, the 2% fund, because the state made the 1% fund 2%, so that's why there's two different accounts, and then some previous special ed access cost grants. So they have about $900,000 currently on our side of the books to spend for the Board of Education. Scott, can you just talk about that money and possible uses and timeframes for using that current money that's in there?
Sure, thank you. As you've heard in the past, we've talked quite a bit about the manufacturing initiative, and potentially, in the near future, having conversations, and then the funding source using some of those monies. There's also been numerous conversations about turf field at the high school. We are one of the very few in the area that do not have a turf field, which would alleviate a lot of our scheduling with weather. So those are just a couple of things that we had our sights on for the use of that money.
That's great. Thank you, Scott.
Okay, thank you.
Exciting stuff.
So, Scott asked if there was any possibility that we could allocate or allow them to put money in the 2% fund this year that could be used for next year, to supplement the budget, based on the budget funds that we give them and the special ed access cost grant money that would be available to them to use for the, for the budget. I did ask what, and it would be savings that they would acquire between now and June 30th on there. I asked him what dollar amount he thought that that might be, and he said probably somewhere between $200,000 and $300,000, if he really started looking at things and how they could save money without cutting any of the existing programs, still supplementing everything, but really looking at things and seeing how they could save money. Scott, do you want to add anything to that?
No, I think, Rose, I think you said that quite well. When you look at our 30-plus million dollar budget, or approximately $3 million per month, there, you know, potentially will be some monies there with fuel costs and things that we might be able to, to channel that money towards next year.
Okay, all right, so I would like to make a motion to allow the Board of Education to put up to $275,000 in the 2% fund for the current year.
Second.
All right, thank you, Council Angeloni, thank you, Council Zampano. Seconded by Council Zampano, any discussion? All right, seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? All right, thank you. Again, thanks for the collaborative effort, guys, this is, this is good.
Jeff, can I just, can I just chime in real quick?
You most certainly can.
I'd like to thank everyone at the council and Rose for reaching out yesterday. I think on both sides of the aisle, we worked really well together, came up with some great ideas, and in 13 years, I think this is one of the smoothest that we've had, so I certainly appreciate it, and I thank all of you.
Thank you.
We appreciate it as well. That's the goal, better communication amongst all entities that are North Branford, so thank you very much.
Okay, and, so, the last thing, and there's, I don't think there's any motion in regards to this, Anthony, about the whole car tax thing, we don't have to make any motion on that.
No, I'm going to just vote to, for the current year's budget to go on the assumption that the car tax cap as proposed by the governor will be enacted, and that's what we're basing the budget on. If it doesn't happen, then there's again a little bit of cushion, but if it does happen, then we're at least covered.
Okay, so Anthony sent out a, the new summary of the budget, which shows a increase in mill rate to, of 1.21, that was before all of the actions that we took tonight. So that incorporated, that takes, that includes the car tax that is proposed, it's still not settled by the state, they're still working on their budget. So one of the things that Governor Lamont has proposed is to cap car taxes at 29 mills. So any town that their mill rate is over 29, we would have to send out tax bills just for $29, and so there's a difference in that. Originally, towns were going to be made whole, but in the latest talks, or latest numbers that Anthony got from CCM, that is not the case, and so in this, right now, there is roughly .17 mills that would be attributable in order for us to make up that money, we would need that much of a tax increase so that it makes the town whole, which is approximately $250,000.
Council Angeloni, explain to the folks that are listening in that this is something that, you know, the town has no control over. We may want to consider talking to our local representation up in Hartford, Tennessee up in Hartford, this is what they're pushing for, so it's important to know that.
Right, I did talk to State Rep. Vincent Kandelora yesterday also in regards to where this stands, that, and there are several different things that they're talking about as far as the car tax proposal. Nothing has been settled on this, they're still negotiating, nothing has been settled yet. I asked him, you know, do we plan for this in our taxes? Otherwise, we're going to be short. Do we, and at this point in time, because it could be weeks before they settle on it, and our budget has to be finished tonight, his advice was basically to plan for it, and which we did. So I, in going through the budget, and we all looked at the numbers, it was hard to be able to cut that amount of money so that there would be no tax increase. And, and it's basically nothing that we have control over on there. So we took care of everything that we had control of in our budget, and unfortunately, we just have to plan for this. And like Anthony said, depending on what happens and what they decide, you know, we hope that we plan for it all, if it comes out more, then, you know, we're going to have to come up with the money someplace else. If it comes up less, what happens is we end up with money that goes into the undesignated fund balance, that we have more revenue than expenses, and then we can spend that money in another year on something else. We hate to do that, but that's the nature of the beast right now, because we don't know what the state is going to do, unfortunately. It's just the timing of how you have to have things done.
We're required to get this done next couple days, they're required to do it a month and a half later, so the, you're juggling, doing our best to make it work.
Could you repeat again what, what the mill rate would be now if we increased? Well, there was some adjustment on, from the Board of...
Assessment Appeals.
Assessment Appeals, so they had some adjustment in the taxes, and it was for the gas company, is that what it was for? So they, there was an appeal, they went through the Board of Assessment Appeals, so that changed a little bit. So, between the tax mill and the, the mill for the car tax from the state, and that adjustment from the Board of Assessment Appeals, that increased the mill rate by .21. And with all of the things that we did tonight...
.09.
Decrease?
Increase .09.
.09? Along with the .21, or that .09 is the net effect?
That's where we are as of right now, .09, with all the changes you made.
And that includes the car tax and, and the Board of Assessment Appeals? So we took, we took care of that with some of our cuts?
That's great.
So that's, it's better than what I was planning.
Better than what we're thinking.
Yes.
Anthony, I got 33.44, is that right? So it's not 1.21?
Well, that's what we started with before.
33.29.
Now it's .09.
.09.
You got 33.23? Well, it was .21.
Yeah, it's, remember, it's a split grand list, you can't do it on one number.
We brought it down to .09.
09. Yeah, very low increase, that's the, the goal is to not make the citizens happy, not increase.
I know.
They pay enough in taxes.
Now, will this have to, will this get adjusted at all with your pilot?
I already did that too.
Oh, you are?
It was 33.20 to go to 33.23 is your final winning number now. That's going to be your motion as soon as I, I'll print them off and make clean sheets for everybody.
Okay.
Thank you.
So we actually took care of some of the car tax and the Board of Assessment Appeal difference on there, so.
Good work.
I think, I think that came out well on our taxes, just a .09. So, so that concludes everything that I came up with and proposed. As far as the budget, Anthony has a few things to do before we get to the rest, which is on the agenda, so we can go back to the regular council agenda.
Yeah, we're going to, we'll go back to Town Management Report after this, so we're set for now, we're going to come back to the budget after, but everything's pretty much suffice. Okay, so we're going to move forward to Item 3, Town Management Report. Michael, your show?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Start off with the Item 3A, which is the update on the COVID-19 testing and vaccine. There is a thick report, as we have had in the packet for your review in terms of the numbers, and, and I guess I can, I can say that unfortunately, we've had a spike here in North Branford, specifically at Town Hall, and our administrators, and I'm one of them, so I can tell you firsthand that there are breakthroughs, I am a breakthrough, I vaccinated and boosted and still had a positive result. Fortunate enough to be here to say that it was mild, and hope that that's the case for, for anyone. But it is real, it is here, and unfortunately, I think the new mantra is that while we like the trend and hope that we can avoid these spikes, it's really, I think, not a matter if, but when individuals get, get hit. But anyway, there's a robust, or plethora of information here as always, and obviously we had through the state and through North Branford and our communities, a spike in the positivity rates and so forth, but again, we'll continue to monitor, and every two weeks, we meet with the Health Department to get these numbers and continue to promote the vaccines and the boosters, and again, monitor any of the variants that are coming out, and certainly happy to answer any questions.
Are we still seeing any kind of number of people turning out for vaccine clinics? And I know it's pretty much...
It's low. It's low, I mean, we hit our, I, I don't, you know, we continue to inch up, but we kind of, we kind of, you know, ramped up to hit, you know, 70 plus, mid 70, almost 80%, but then that's a real tough, kind of plateaued, it just kind of, it kind of drops off, so it's, it's very, very minimal at this point.
Mayor, I don't think we're kind of at the point where anybody who hasn't gotten vaccinated, there's, there's nothing that's going to dynamite them out to get one.
No.
Yep, we continue to push.
Hope that this gets, we'll see a small spike from the holiday, and then it will start to wane, from what I hear, it'll start to wane two weeks into May, and then hopefully go back to some normalcy in the summertime before we all go through a little bit more of again. God bless everyone, keep safe. Okay, thank you.
B is reports in the Permit Project Building Committee, and so the committee met last night on the high school, we had a very robust discussion around some experts, or not experts, but vendors that, that came in to talk about the situation with respect to ice melt around the building, and how to approach that in addition to furniture and selecting furniture. So there was quite a bit of discussion around those particular topics, but by and large, the project is moving along quite nicely at this point. I'm not aware of any, any hiccups or any issues, and if I missed it, Michelle was there as well, so she can chime in, but it was, I think, a very productive meeting, as most of them are, they're long but productive. The North Branford Police Department discussion with the architect, Bill Silver, was very productive as well, they are pushing him, and, and gave a, basically the directive to say, come out of schematics, or get schematics done, finished, come back here, two, two weeks, I think, to give us an update, but to push to get this project specifications done and on the street by the end of May. So that is the task for his firm and his team, and they are moving along to do, to meet that goal. So, he's pretty clear, and the committee was clear about their objectives, so.
I would say, I'm very disappointed. First we heard February 1, then we heard March 1, then we heard May 1, now it's going to be probably the end of May?
Yes.
That's disappointing, I think.
It's definitely taking some more time than we'd like it to, but let's hope the project itself comes out.
Well, yeah, I agree to that, but I just think it's...
Yeah, and, and just to give some flavor, I mean, just on, again, these, these iterations, if you will, these design issues, when we, when we talk about being fortunate enough to have a million dollars being awarded for an EOC room, that means, you know, the, the committee seriously put thought into how to best utilize that, and it meant going to the second floor. So when you do that, that's, it's just going to take a little bit more time to redesign and do that. And so I think you're going to get a very good product, I would hope we get a very good product when it's done, and I, I, I hear what you're saying, Council Diamond, I understand where you're coming from, but sometimes it just takes a little bit more thought to get it done, get it done right. So we, they are tasked with, with getting that out as quickly as they can. MBIS update, you, I believe have a, should all have a handout, the architect gave a two-page, or maybe it was more, maybe it was reduced to two pages, but he gave information on the cost estimate, that was Rusty Malek for QA and M, on what the new number is, and...
Oh, page two. Look at that number.
Yeah. The new number is 6.99.
And the albatross keeps growing.
I, I, I think there's a lot to digest there, so I, I just wanted to, to make sure you got that for tonight's meeting, he was able to deliver that last night, and of course, I think the issue there is obviously a bond issue, and funding and discussion around that, but also the timing of that project as well. So, you know, I, that's going to need further discussion for sure.
Yeah.
And then Stanley T. Williams Roof, that the architects were interviewed, I was not part of that unfortunately, but I understand it went well, and there are notes, and they are going to... And they are going to, uh, continue with a follow-up on that, Michelle?
Yes.
Yes. Great. Um, so that is moving along as, as well. And that's all I have.
All right. Thank you, Michael. Appreciate that. All right. Moving on to item four, so we need events and presentations. I don't think there's anything here, correct?
None.
Okay. Five citizen statements and petitions of correspondence. A proclamation to Earth Day, April 22nd, 2022, opening day for North Branford. Um, I'm gonna read proclamation we have here for Earth Day. Whereas the first Earth Day was celebrated on April 22nd, 1970, with the goal of inspiring environmental awareness, encouraging the conservation, protection, and appreciation of our nation's natural resources. And whereas is the responsibility of each of us to safeguard the environment by recognizing that all human life depends on the earth, upon one other, for our mutual existence, well-being, and development. And whereas the steps we can take to protect and preserve our natural environment through education, partnerships, and positive actions should be encouraged in the town of North Branford. And whereas, the citizens of the town of North Branford are committed to not only the protection and preservation of our environment, but also the restoration of our ecosystems and habitat. And whereas the town of North Branford citizen staff and elected officials are working closely with federal, state, and local governments, and with non-governmental organizations, develop and implement regulations and organizations specifically designed to preserve and improve the town of North Branford's fragile ecosystems and quality of life therein. And whereas the town of North Branford proudly recognizes all who participate in Earth Day for their dedication to, uh, taking a proactive role in shaping the future of our environment and in protecting the town of North Branford's precious national resources. Therefore, now therefore, we, the Town Council of North, Town North Branford, Connecticut, do hereby proclaim April 22nd, 2022, as Earth Day. And the town of North Branford urge all citizens to be mindful of local, state, and national laws which protect our environment and to join in the efforts to preserve the beauty and wonder of the lands, skies, and water of earth and all its diversity. In witness thereof, I hereby set my hand and cause the seal of the town of North Branford to be affixed on the nineteenth day of April 22nd, 2022, signed Mayor Jeffrey McMillan. So that is the proclamation for Earth Day. Uh, appropriate, I believe there's going to be, um, some, uh, celebration per se at Wall Field near the, um, current police station during the ceremonies for opening day for baseball season. So, uh, I look forward to, to like, hopefully seeing our citizens out there and, of course, uh, the excitement of, of the proclamation of Earth Day. So thank you for putting this together and happy to sign that. Okay. Okay. Any other citizen statements, petitions, or correspondence?
But could, uh, Mr. Mayor, there's, sir? I know there's, every month tends to be a lot of different kinds of months to observe, but there were two things that I did wanna note. Um, April is Autism Awareness Month. And I just wanted to point that out, um, amongst the understanding and acceptance of those with autism. And also it is National Public Safety Telecommunicators Month, um, which is, uh, specifically focused on the appreciation of those who are dispatchers and work with dispatching. They're literally the front lines of the front line and usually under-recognized element of our public safety team, and I just wanna recognize that too.
All right. Thank you for doing that, Counselor. I agree. I think, uh, they are the unrecognized force that keeps everyone together and getting things, you know, situated. So thank you for that. And of course, autism awareness, very important. I'm, I'm certain that every single person that hears this or is in this room has been touched by or knows someone that has, you know, inflicted or deals with autism, which you'll see that, um, many of these people and children are absolutely beautiful, um, people and extremely intelligent. And it's, uh, it's a great month to recognize not only, you know, what autism is, but also the beauty of it. So, we thank you for that. Okay, uh, resignation appointment, I see none. Unfinished business, discussions, and actions. None in there as well? It's nice not to see anything in there. Okay, new business, discussion, and actions. Um, all right, so we're gonna go through a couple of these quickly. Um, I'm told these are relatively quick, um, bid specifications that we, we do each year. Um, so, under A, review and approval of bid specifications for RFQ slash P. Uh, one, 2022 dash 2023, Certified Public Accounting Monitoring Service for FY 2022 through 2024.
So moved?
Second. Okay, thank you. We have a motion by Counselor Diamond, seconded by Counselor. For a second. All right, I, did I do the first one or the second one? All right, Counselor Downs, I apologize. I thought I skipped one. That's over. Um, that was the correct one. Uh, so motion by Counselor Diamond, seconded by Counselor Downs. Uh, any discussion?
Yes, Mayor, if I could, um, just that, uh, these were reviewed by council. And, uh, if we could maybe modify the motion, the, uh, Rich could speak to it. But, uh, they have some minor formatting, uh, issues that, and once they looked at it, could help us clean up just a little bit. And so maybe subject to, uh, or approval subject to the, uh, form, formatting, I guess.
Yeah. If it is the body's pleasure to pass all of these, I, I would just ask that the motion, motion to approve, subject to such minor changes as to form as are recommended by, uh, the, the town attorney, by the town attorney. We, we, for example, uh, the addendum, you have a wonderful addendum put together by the folks here in Town Hall, but we wanna make sure there's language incorporating that endendum into each one of these specific things.
Okay. So how would we word that motion differently, or?
Motion to approve, uh, with the minor modifications as to form as recommended by Town Council.
Okay. Michelle, you have that?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. And that's for each one, or is that?
For each one, actually. Yeah, it's the same.
I didn't know if we could do this one.
No, that, we wanna incorporate that endendum into everything, and then we wanna make a couple little changes in addition to that.
Okay.
None substantive, but all as to form, to make sure it fits together.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Appreciate that.
Our pleasure.
Okay. All right, so we had, um.
I'll, I'll make the vote, I'll make the motion with the modification.
Okay, motion modification, Counselor Diamond, seconded by Counselor Downs. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Aye. Opposed? Abstained? Okay. Move on to B, review and approval of bid specifications for bid number one, 2022 dash 23, Supply and Delivery Propane to Town of North Branford.
So moved, um, with the addition with minor modifications to the form as recommended by the town attorney.
Okay. Motion by Counselor Angeloni. Second. Second by Counselor Abelson. Any discussion? Seeing none. All in favor? Aye. Aye. Opposed? Abstained? Okay. On to C, review and approval of bid specifications, bid number two, 2022 dash 23, Professional Cleaning Services for Town Buildings.
So moved with the addition of, with minor modifications to form as recommended by the town attorney.
I'd like to second that and say that there is one error in there. Maybe the, I don't know if I, to prove that I read it carefully, it's not Lieutenant Lovelace, it's Deputy Chief Lovelace in there.
Thank you, Counselor Diamond. Yes.
Amended? Motion amended?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Counselor Angeloni, Counselor Diamond, uh, and thank you for that change. Um, any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstained? All right. On to D. Lines here. All right, review and approval of bid specification for bid number three, 2022 dash 2023, Fire Apparatus Emergency Vehicle Maintenance and Repair Services.
Uh, so moved with the addition of, with minor modifications to form as recommended by town attorney.
Second. All right. Motion by Counselor Angeloni, seconded by Deputy Mayor Zampano. Any discussion? Seeing none. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstained? All right, shall pass. Thank you. And E, review and approval of bid specification for RFP number one, 2022 dash 2023, Certified Medical, um, no, sorry, Certified Emergency Medical Technicians and Licensed Paramedic Ambulance Personnel.
So moved with the addition of, with minor modifications to form as recommended by town attorney.
Second. Okay. Motion by Counselor Angeloni, seconded by Counsel, uh, by Deputy Mayor Zampano. Any discussion? Seeing none. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstained? All right. Thank you very much. We already took care of F, that was moved, um, prior for budget deliberations. Moving on to item G, finalization of budget. Anthony, are we ready for that?
Yep.
Of course.
Oh, cool.
We got the motions here.
Very good. Yes, we do. And here they are, if it was talking.
All right. So I'd like to make a motion, be it hereby resolved that the North Branford Town Council hereby adopts the proposed operating budget for the 2022-23 fiscal year as amended and recommends the same to the budget, budget referendum at the attached appropriation levels, and be it hereby further resolved that the Treasurer Finance Director is authorized to make any mathematical adjustments that may be required to balance the budget.
Second. Yep. All right.
Um, I think we have to read the, the, the numbers on the second page. So, total appropriations are made up of Town Government Operations, eighteen million seven-one-three-two-ten. Board of Education, thirty-two million seven-thirty-five-seven-fourteen. Capital Improvements, one million one-eighty-two. Debt Service, three million seven-seven-six-three-three-eight. Fund Balance for Capital, two million two-nine-seven-six-four-zero. Total Appropriations are fifty-eight million seven-oh-four-nine-oh-two. Total Revenues are made up of Non-Tax Revenue, four million one-sixty-seven-nine-eighty-one. State Grants for Education, seven million three-three-one-three-two-five. Fund Balance Applied, eight-hundred thousand dollars. Fund Balance Capital Appropriation, two million two-nine-seven-six-four-zero. Local Elderly Tax Credit, minus one-hundred thousand dollars. Amount to be raised by taxes, assuming a ninety-eight-point-five collection rate, forty-four million two-oh-seven-nine-fifty-six. Total Revenues, fifty-eight million seven-oh-four-nine-oh-two.
We have a motion by Counselor Angeloni. I have a second by Counselor Downs. All right. Um, do we just typically do this as a roll call, or?
Whatever you want.
Why don't we do this one a roll call vote? Okay. Would you call the roll call vote, please, Michelle? Yes.
Deputy Mayor Zampano.
Yes.
Counselor Abelson.
Yes.
Counselor Angeloni.
Yes.
Counselor Diamond.
Yes.
Counselor Downs.
Yes.
Counselor Mace.
Yes.
And Counselor Cooch.
So it's Counselor Coe?
Yes.
Yes, okay. All right, so that is all yeas. That shall pass. Thank you all. I know budget season has been fun and full of, uh, meetings and excitement. So appreciate everyone's hard work, Rose, specifically doing all these numbers all the time and on the phone constantly. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Okay, um, is there anything else we have to move on before we go to?
Part B.
Part B. All right, so we have a second motion.
Yes. So, I'd like to make a motion for approval of the Advisory Budget Referendum question. The motion is, in accordance with Section C eight dash five of the Charter of the Town of North Branford, the Town Council hereby approves the following advisory referendum question for the fiscal year 2022-23 budget. Shall the Town Council recommended budget of fifty-eight million seven-oh-four-nine-oh-two, which will require a mill rate of thirty-three-point-two-three mills, be adopted?
Second. Motion by Counselor Angeloni, seconded by Deputy Mayor Zampano. Michelle, would you call a roll call vote, please?
Sure. Mayor McMillan.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Zampano.
Yes.
Counselor Abelson.
Yes.
Counselor Angeloni.
Yes.
Counselor Diamond.
Yes.
Counselor Downs.
Yes.
Uh, Counselor Mace.
Yes.
All right. Again, thank you. Passes. All right. Anthony?
How are you, sir?
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Uh, financial report, March 31, 2022, remains unremarkable. The, the usual suspects, tax collections again continue to outpace last year. Ninety-nine-point-three percent of current compared to ninety-eight-point-five. Overall revenue, outpacing last year, ninety-one-point-six percent compared to ninety-point-four. On the expense side, running under budget compared to last year. Seventy-two point cent of budget, percent of budget spent compared to seventy-three-point-nine. While favorable, the technology department, we know all along, has been over-expended. Uh, you'll see this month also, the debt service account is slightly over-expended. And you may ask yourself, how could debt service be over-expended? This was because we did that financing in August to take advantage of the interest rates that we didn't budget for. So the interest that accumulated was not budgeted. We had some money put aside, but not enough to cover the interest, so. Debt service should never be over, it's, it's black and white. There's no wiggle room. We should do a refinancing, things like that. So that's why there's a little bit of an issue on debt service. Any questions?
No. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Aye, appropriation transfers.
A couple were these, as Counselor Angeloni had mentioned earlier, as relating to the police department. The, uh, commission and the chief were here, uh, I believe it was last month, going over some numbers. Again, the, uh, some of the changes. And the bottom half of the page are transfers that are just standard operating, uh, that, uh, they're budgeted, and let's say in the first case, the ambulance one, it's budgeted in the ambulance department to show the ambulance expense, and then it's an operating transfer out to that fund subsequently. Rentals Bears House, same thing. We budgeted there to show the town's, uh, commitment to the Rentals Bears House, but then it gets operating transferred out, uh, to that capital project fund. And the same with the self-insurance deductibles. That's for lawsuits, things like that. We pay the first X amount of dollars out of pocket. That's what that fund goes through.
Okay, thank you, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the appropriation transfers as submitted.
Second. Motion by Counselor Angeloni, seconded by Deputy Mayor Zampano. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstained? All right, thank you. Item J, approval of tax refunds.
So moved.
Second. Motion by Counselor Angeloni, seconded by Counselor Downs. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstained? All right, approved. Thank you. On to item nine, citizen statements and petitions. Are there any citizen statements? Anyone from Zoom? We need some monitors here. Someone's turn around.
Is there anything, Mike?
No, I, I don't see anything. No. No comments, posts, um.
There's just one post on the Facebook, uh, from Bob Whitworth. The Permit Project Building Committee is doing plenty of hard work behind the scenes. The PD is going to be great and work the work.
Great. Thank you, Bob. You know, Bob's on that committee. He's always working hard in those meetings. We thank him. Okay. Um, any others before we move on? Going once, going twice. Okay. Moving on to, um, number 10, executive session. Uh, we'll go into A, CSG one-dash winner, strategy negotiators, respective collective bargaining.
So moved.
We have to, we have to bring in, uh, Town Manager.
Wow.
Thank you, Lisa. Uh, Town Attorney, anyone else who needs to be in?
Uh, Fran.
I'm sorry?
Fran. Marolla?
Hey, where's Fran? Oh, he's not here?
Yeah. With Fran and Chris R. Virtual.
Chris is here?
Chris Hodgson. Yeah.
I see Chris. Yeah. Hey, Chris.
Hey, everyone.
I didn't see him up there. It's so confusing behind us.
So, just to.
We are quick on the draw there.
I was quicker than that when I had it.
Well, we have to, we have to still vote to the end to it. Okay, so we're good? All right, so, Tom, motion by Counselor Angeloni, seconded by Counselor Diamond. Any discussion? Seeing none. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Let's go. All right, thank you, folks.